Order of the First Order of Business, President of the State. 我们是联合酋长，
First order of business is, we do have the Roberts Rules of Order to be followed in this meeting, and so I hope everybody understands that. The next order of business is to approve tonight's agenda.
I'm being adopted.
We have a motion and a second oral favor.
Aye.
Close, so Carrie. Next order of business, Jeff Anderson with the Costin Group will give an overview of the legislative session and discuss the Capitol's laundry. Thank you, Jeff.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and councilors. It's an honor to be here. And just for a matter of introduction, my name is Jeff Anderson. I'm with the Costin Group. I work with Gary Surtvenek, who is also a part of our firm. We are a small contract lobbying firm. We represent small cities and school districts, mostly in northern Minnesota. Gary lives in the Britt area and on Crane Lake. I was born and raised in Ely and live in Duluth. And then during the legislative session, I live in St. Paul. So I spend my winters, Monday through Friday, down south.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
A little warmer than in...
Warmer, yes.
Yes, so I've had the honor of working on your behalf in front of the Minnesota Legislature and related government bodies for several years now. And we've had, I think, some great success with funding for various projects. Going back to 2019 with the $200,000 grant for the recreational access and boat launch. 2020, a $762,000 LCCMR grant. LCCMR again in 2022 for $1 million. And then, of course, last year's bonding award of $3.5 million. And over the course of these years, also with Cheryl on a number of other issues, federal issues, some COVID pandemic-related issues. So we're always on call and standing by. We worked this year representing you in front of the legislature on a bonding request for $200,000 for a public works facility. House File 4882 and Senate File 4966, which were introduced. The bills were introduced by Senator Hostchild and Representative Scraba. And both of them are certainly no stranger to Rainier. They are in their first terms in front of the legislature. And as you know, prior to that, we worked closely with Senator Bach and Representative Eklund. So this district is a legislative district is unique in the state in the sense that we have a DFL senator and a Republican representative. And it's an interesting dynamic. Not a lot of districts are like that. They're either controlled by the DFL or controlled by the Republicans. And so it's, I would say, very good. We have people in both rooms representing our interests for the city of Rainier. And that's really important, too, when it comes to bonding, because the minority party in this legislative session, the Republicans, have a voice in bonding. And so I'll talk more about that. This year, we had, or over the course of this two-year legislative biennium, there were 11,023 bills introduced. A record. There's never been that many introduced. And they were introduced literally up until the last day of this legislative session. Now, the clock starts again January 15th of 2025. All the bills are dead now. Bills have to be reintroduced beginning in January of 2025.
How many did we pass?
Hundreds, probably two or three hundred.
About 11,000.
Out of 11,000. Now, keep in mind, many of these bills are passed in an omnibus form, so they're a compilation of combined bills. And that's how the legislative session ended this year. It was a little chaotic. In split government, things can get messy, and that's what happened this particular session. Towards the end of session, the Republicans spent a lot of time filibustering, because again, in a legislative situation like we have, the majority rules. The minority doesn't have a lot of power. Where they have power is through disruption, filibustering, and kind of waiting out the clock or trying to waste some time. And they did a really good job of that this session. And literally up until the final hour of the legislative session, the DFL let it happen, but then introduced a very large omnibus bill. That was a tax bill. It was a transportation bill, an energy and agriculture bill, a human services bill, higher education bill, housing and labor bill. And it was all packaged into one bill, about 3,000 pages long. All of the provisions had previously been heard somewhere at some point, but they were packaged in, they put the gavel down, and they voted on it. And the Republicans knew it was going to happen, but it was a pretty rowdy 11 o'clock to 12 o'clock hour in the House and State Senate. And ultimately, that bill passed. It included some important things for entities around the state. One of them was funding for the tax forfeit issue, the Tyler versus Hennepin lawsuit that was decided by the U.S. Supreme Court that impacted Hennepin County, Ramsey County, St. Louis County, Lake County, Koochichin County, a number of counties that have a lot of tax forfeited land. It would have had a price tag of over $100 million that counties would have had to pay for, had the state not stepped up. And so they did. There was also over $30 million in funding for emergency medical services, for rural, primarily rural ambulance services. I know the International Falls Service will receive some of that funding. Most of that money is in rural Minnesota. It was far less than what Senator Hostchild had introduced, which was about $120 million bill, but still something to go towards that funding EMS. There's also a number of reforms in there, because the state said, "Look, if we're going to help bail you out, help fund this, you've also got to change the way you do business." So there's going to be some changes in that regard. Not all popular with folks within the EMS community.
Where are those changes at? I'd like to read them. I know you probably can't get much from International Falls on them, so, you know.
Yeah, I can send you a summary of what that is.
I would like to see that.
Some of the funding specific, I think it's just in St. Louis County had to do with the Sprint Medic Model, where they're going to do some test programs on having volunteer and paid EMS people who go out and sort of triage the situation before an ambulance unit is sent out as a money-saving option. And so that's one of the changes.
I'm really interested in seeing that.
Sure, I can send that along.
I'd like to see that, too. I'd like to see that. Email it to you and email it to us. Email it to Cheryl and email it to us. I'd love to see that.
Yeah, absolutely. And the Coalition of Greater Minnesota Cities, who I work closely with a few of their lobbyists, really took the lead on that EMS issue, because it was, it impacted greater Minnesota more so than the metro area.
Oh, absolutely.
I can definitely send that over. And then something very important, I know to Rainier, the legislature passed a bill which would make sure that Uber and Lyft stay in the state of Minnesota. So your Uber and Lyft.
Uber takes me to work every day.
An environmental and natural resource bill passed, which turned out to be a good bill for the most part. It started out being a really bad bill for anyone who was trying to build motorized trails for ATVs or snowmobiles. If you were a tractor or sports person, there were some bad provisions. Those were mostly stripped out. And there actually was ATV trail money that will impact some of the Voyager Club.
Yeah, the Voyager Trail is going to extend up here.
Yep. So grant aid money from the ATV dedicated account, which is money from the gas tax. Also, there were some new provisions for helium capture, because that now in northern Minnesota has become a thing, especially in Lake County. They don't know, though, how vast the deposits are, which is why counties other than just Lake County were interested in this, to know if people are capturing that resource and it's coming from public lands, what kind of money will be paid back to the government and the taxpayers. There was a jobs and economic development bill passed of interest for northern Minnesota. There was $1 million there for the Entrepreneur Fund, which does lending for small businesses and entrepreneurs. Education bill that had additional money in there for the REED Act for public schools. There was a health and commerce bill that included a provision that had to do with 340B drug pricing, which impacts hospital systems that have Medicaid and Medicare patients. And it will be an infusion of money into those hospitals, especially in greater Minnesota, to the tune of millions and millions of dollars, which many of them need that, because they have trouble because of the low Medicare reimbursement rates. So that's something that the healthcare, rural healthcare was excited about. There were also changes to paid family leave, earned safe and sick time. A number of the provisions that were passed in the last legislative session that needed some tweaking and some fixes. Now, what wasn't passed, and I know is important to us here, as well as a number of other communities, was a bonding bill. And the bonding bill, the even year of a legislative biennium is traditionally the bonding year. The odd year, so 2023, 2025, those are the budget years. The state legislature passes a two-year budget. And so in the even year, the only thing they really have to do is pass a bonding bill, because everything else is on cruise control for a two-year period of time. However, they traditionally will have spending bills. They're usually a lot smaller in the even year than they are in the odd year. This year, there were spending bills, not as aggressive and as large as last year's $17 billion in spending. Significantly smaller and more conservative in spending this year.
But that was because you didn't pass the bonding bill the year before.
Well, the bonding bill, so the last time, prior to 2023, the last bonding bill was passed in October of 2020. And then 2021, no bonding bill. That was a budget year. 2022, the traditional bonding year. They went through the whole process, and again, no bonding bill. Everybody went home. And part of that had to do with it being an election year. The Republicans and the Democrats each thought they were going to control everything. And at that moment in time in 2022, a split government. Well, the Democrats were right when they left, and they did end up controlling everything. So fast forward to 2023. There hadn't been a bonding bill for two years. There were motivated legislators to get one done, because there was a backlog of projects. So they passed the largest bonding bill in state history, both general obligation bonds, where they borrow, which requires a supermajority of legislators to pass that constitutionally. And it also had a large-scale cash component to it. The cash bonding only requires a majority of legislators, which is why that bill had a lot of money for controversially, for a lot of nonprofit entities and things of that nature. The GEO bonding bill was for more of your brick and mortar infrastructure to cities, to counties, to government entities. So that happened, that passed. This year, everyone thought they'd be back on track in the even year, which is why this last summer, the bonding committees did their bonding tours around the state. They visited projects. You presented in Virginia on the Rainier Project. And so they spent a lot of time hearing from cities and groups around the state. So we get to the legislative session. The committees begin hearing bills again, mostly projects that hadn't been heard previously. The Republicans kept holding out. And they, again, one of the only things they have some influence over is bonding in this environment. They kept holding out, and they had several offers. They wanted funding for EMS. They didn't want the legislature to pass the Equal Rights Amendment, constitutional amendment. There were various things that went back and forth. The House and Senate DFL finally, in the last month of the legislative session, introduced a bill that was their attempt at bonding. And it had the Rainier Project in it. It was not a complete bill, because for the most part, the Republican projects weren't included in it. It had some placeholders for when the Republicans came to the table. Again, a benefit of us having a DFL and a Republican member is we've got people in both camps who are fighting for our project. So over the course of a few weeks, the House Republicans came to the table with some offers in terms of bonding, wanted to pass a bonding bill. The Senate Republicans never really came that way. And ultimately, a bonding bill never came together. And I talked at the end of session to the House Republican bonding lead, and he said disappointingly, the Senate Republican bonding lead never met with him during the entire session to talk about bonding. And so it seemed like the DFL and the House Republicans were the most motivated on bonding, didn't get across the finish line. Ironically, many of the things that the Republicans were holding out for happened or didn't happen. There was funding for EMS. There was no vote ultimately on the Equal Rights Amendment. So it was an interesting effort that collapsed in the chaotic end of the legislative session. So chaotic that the DFL House passed a cash bonding bill, which was much smaller, had mostly projects for things like the University of Minnesota for state assets. It was sent to the Senate. They had to vote by 12:00 midnight. They were about 20 seconds late in closing the voting board, and the parliamentarians said, "It doesn't pass." So there was no bonding bill. There was not the GEO, General Obligation Bill, or the cash bill. So that's where things sit today. So looking at 2025, there won't be bonding tours this summer. They happened last summer. All of the bills that were introduced, the bonding bills, are essentially dead now, because at the end of this legislative session, this biennium, you start over. It's an election year. The legislature will look different come January of 2025. So with it being an election year, all 134 House members are up for reelection. We have a competitive race here in this legislative district. The control of the House is going to be determined by six seats. So if the Republicans can flip six seats around the state of Minnesota, they will control the House of Representatives. And there are, and so the Democrats are working hard to flip seats and keep their seats. One of the seats on the Iron Range that was held by, that is currently held by Representative Dave Lislegard is the Republicans' number-one pickup target. Lislegard has decided not to run for reelection. So it, I think, makes it a little harder for the Democrats to keep that particular seat. That's likely a Republican pickup seat. Other side of the coin is down in Hermantown, on the other side of Senator Hostchild's district, there's a Republican who won in a House district that voted for Hillary Clinton and Joe Biden and is still pretty blue. And the odds are that she may not be able to hang on to that seat. So those are the math that the two parties are looking at and trying to retain control. The Senate's a little more complicated, and I didn't really get into this earlier in my talk, but this whole legislative, the whole last month of the legislative session, everything almost fell apart multiple times in the Senate, stemming from a senator who broke into her stepmother's home in Detroit Lakes, was arrested for burglary, charged for burglary. And the Republicans called on her to resign, called on the DFL to expel her. But in a Senate which is only controlled by one vote, the Democrats weren't expelling anybody at that point. They wanted to finish up the legislative session.
Convicted, but we can't give up the vote so they can commit a crime.
And so now...
You know, I mean, that's awful. Hostchild voted for that, didn't he?
It was, well, it never... Yes, the full, there was never a vote to expel Senator Mitchell. The, since the end of the legislative session, senators have come out now saying that during session, they thought it was important that the people of her district had that representation. Now that the session is over, she should resign, and they should be able to have a special election. She is doubling down, though, and not resigning. She has said she will not resign. And so what that does is it puts the Senate in a situation where if she is convicted and they expel her later this year or in early next year, it has the same effect in that it puts the Senate at a tie. Then there'll have to be a special session during the Senate, during the Senate session. And it would, her seat would likely stay DFL control, but that's not...
Is it by election or by appointment?
It's by election. They have to have a special election. So it's a very interesting dynamic in how this could play out during the next legislative session. Now, there is another senator who just resigned, because she's running for Congress. She's a senator, or a state senator from the White Bear Lake area. And her district is pretty, probably pretty safe, DFL. It's pretty blue. But they're going to have a special election in November during the regular election to fill her seat. That's likely to stay DFL. Again, though, no one knows. Politics is a, interesting things can happen in a presidential year between now and November. The other wild card is the former Senate Majority Leader Carrie Dietzick, who stepped down from that Majority Leader post in January, is battling cancer. And she has been, she was not at the Capitol for this entire session. She voted remotely. She's been struggling with cancer. So that's another unknown. Her seat also is a Minneapolis seat, likely to stay DFL. So if I had to make a prediction, the DFL will be in control by one vote in the next legislative session. It just could be messy in the process of how these senators are replaced if there are special elections. So what that does for bonding, from the legislators I've been talking to, and I've been talking to lots of them, because as soon as the legislative session ends, it becomes fundraising season again. And as a lobbyist, I get invited to a lot of fundraisers on both sides of the aisle, which is part of the reason I was in St. Paul yesterday and will be back in St. Paul tomorrow. The legislators, both Democratic and Republican, that I'm talking to, seem to be motivated to really push forward with the bonding bill next year, knowing it won't be an election year, knowing that one didn't get done this year. The backlog only increases, the prices only go up, and so bills have to be reintroduced. And so for Rainier, determining what the project looks like, if it's of the same scope, if we need to make adjustments to what the bill language allows, what the price tag may be, what our ask is. And then we'll want to have a conversation with Representative Scraba and Senator Hostchild between now and the end of the year. I can almost guarantee they will be supportive of whatever those changes are and willing to introduce the bill come January and push it through.
And the match may be forgivable?
So, Mayor, that's, in the last two bonding bills, the state has waived the match requirement for municipalities. And we typically try to, we try to add that language. However, some of the members of the bonding committee don't like that. They like when a city has something to bring forward. So we can advocate for the match being waived. Sometimes it's better to advocate for a smaller match, to say...
Maybe 50% of the match could be waived, but that could be a legislative decision after the bill is passed.
Correct, it would be part of the bill.
A legislative decision, not necessarily our ask from whatever we ask for. If we have a match, fine, but if it forgives 50% or whatever that number is, 100%.
Correct. We could put in, we could ask our legislators...
Do we have to ask, or is that something the legislators promote?
So the last two times, we've had it in our bill, but what they've done is an umbrella for every project. So I think we should consider talking to our legislators, at least bringing it down to a 25% match or something, saying, "Look, we're a small community. We don't have the resources that a Bloomington does," or something like that.
Do they do an umbrella, or can they define it as, okay, it's a small old community, let's cap it at 25% for Rainier? Or can they pick out, even the legislators can pick out the cap for each one? Or do they do the umbrella?
Mayor, they have done both.
Oh, they've done both, okay.
So in the past two bills, they've done it as an umbrella. But in previous bonding years, they have made exceptions for smaller communities or special circumstances where somebody may not have the full 50% match.
Well, usually if you ask for one, you should have it.
Right, right. But it is, and I think where you run into some challenges is if you're a smaller community who's asking the state for $10 million for a sewer treatment plant or a water treatment plant or something of that nature, then they're likely to ask for a little more leniency in that match requirement.
So in our particular situation, would you consider increasing our ask? And hopefully, we can get some reduction in the map, in the match? This is the ideal situation.
The price of your project, we know, is not going to go down.
No, we know that's probably up 9% or 10% to start with.
I think legislators appreciate us being upfront about the numbers at the beginning of session, rather than having to come back later and say, "We need more." And that, that has happened in recent years because of inflation, because of pandemic-related issues.
Happened with the federal project right here, the railroad. Not CN, but the federal project itself. Had the money, and it wasn't enough. So a lot of federal projects, you had to go back to Congress and say, "Hey, guys, everything's coming in, 50%, 75% of the budget. So let's reappropriate all this money and be, print it more."
Right.
Well, that's basically what happened. And that's why we're, how many trillion in debt?
So in relation to the, to Rainier's project, because it is in the whole scheme of things a relatively smaller project, I don't think that it's unreasonable to ask for, to have the project costs go up and to ask for more projecting that you're going to need more.
A suggestion on that, I know, did we ask for 300?
Two.
Two? So asking for four, five would not be unreasonable?
No, I don't believe so.
And it's got the match, you can basically get the project for whatever, if we get a match, if we do, you know?
Correct. Yeah, I don't think that's unreasonable.
The deal is, even if you would ask for half a million and you get it, and they say, "No, we didn't release the match." You could actually only take 200 or 300 of it, and we'd have to kick in 300 of ours, or whatever, the match. As much as you took from them, it's all we'd have to match. So even if we asked for more, you don't have to necessarily take it.
That's correct, however...
If we had to match it, and if we didn't have the ability to match it, that would be the prudent thing to do.
Correct, and that money would return back to the state, which happens.
We wouldn't be obligated to kick in a half a million dollars in our own, or whatever that money is, because of the match.
Correct. So that's where things sit with this legislative session. It was a shorter session, but yet a complicated session. I will say that, and you know this from past sessions, if we reintroduce the bill in January, it will have to be heard again. And since there is no bonding tour, we'd have to have, we'd be fighting for a hearing and having the city come down to testify. We would probably be needing folks to come to the Capitol more often than we did this year, just simply because of the dynamics of the next session and the fact it's the longer session starting in January.
So I guess one of the questions is, and I'll ask you this, the uniqueness of having a Republican and a Democrat is beneficial to us because of the introductions of different bills and the ability to work within each party's needs? because of introductions of different bills and, and ability to work within each party makes compromise, I guess. Is that a fair statement?
In regards to, well, first of all, we have Senator Hostchild and Representative Scraba get along and work really well together, which I don't know that that's necessarily the case in other districts that have Democrats and Republicans. And so that's a benefit. Representative Scraba serves on the Capital Investment Committee in the House. That's a benefit for us. Senator Hostchild serves on the Tax Committee, Environmental Natural Resource Committee. All of those things are good for this district, good for Northern Minnesota. Having, what happens is legislators are asked for their bonding priorities. And Rainier's projects, I think because of all of your lobbying efforts, my lobbying efforts, and the fact that these are good projects that we bring to them, are, that they're interested in supporting, makes it so that we are in a really good position. So when they hand their lists to their leadership, we're on both of the lists. And that's what happened this legislative session, is what happened last year as well. And I think we're in a, there's no reason to believe it wouldn't happen in the next legislative session.
Well, that's a bit of change in representation. Harvey or Scraba, obviously, that would change...
Correct.
The dynamics of what you just were saying, you know, what a... Not that I think Harvey would do bad jobs for us or whatever, but right now, we've probably got the best in both worlds, the way it is at the moment.
Correct, yeah. We have, uh, we've been taken good care of by the current representatives. And that's not to say about anybody in the future, but...
It's easy to sell things, but at the same time, it's, we're here to do the best for the constituents. And if that's the best scenario for us, we're glad to hear that.
So I'm happy to stand for any, well, I could go on and talk all night about the legislative session.
That was a last but really well succinctly put.
No, it was good. Yeah, it was good. What, what committee did you say Scraba said on, I know it's bonding, but it's...
Capital Investment Committee or the Bonding Committee? He's also on the Natural Resources, Environment Natural Resources Committee and the Legacy Committee. And then Senator Hostchild's on Taxes, Environment Natural Resources, and Education Policy. And where the Environment Committee is good in the sense that they are fighting for trails and hunting and fishing and all of this stuff, that's important.
Well, you know, this district, environmental is a big, 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 close to our hearts around here because all open land and water. We have multiple issues all the time with wetlands, shorelands, taxes.
They work on all of that. And the Tax Committee, though, for Senator Hostchild, not so much this session, but last session, the work he did for counties and cities on the different municipal aids, local government aids, county program aids, was very helpful. Because again, people in the Twin Cities aren't necessarily in tune with how important those different funding mechanisms are.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Right, they don't get it.
So we've been lucky. We had Senator Bach in that position for many years. And now having Senator Hostchild there is important.
You know, there was a fund created for helping municipalities with roads that never was available before, as I was giving to counties. But was that passed, or...
You're talking about the local road improvement grants? Yes.
And how much was that like, how much did you...
I don't recall. It was funded last in the budget year. I don't recall, but I know we...
Have we seen any money from that, Cheryl? Or not yet?
We don't get it until July budgets. I think it was around 24,000. Does that sound right?
It does. And we did get letters from Senator Hostchild, Representative Scraba, of support. And I know they had talked to Mid-Not about that because it's, there's actually several communities in their district that I know have applied. It's a competitive process. But that's another program that they want to try to get more money put into.
The one that I'm thinking of was, was Small Cities Assistance.
Well, there's Small Cities Assistance, but then there's Local Road Improvement Grants through, through Mid-Not. So there's both of those, which were funded in last session.
Okay, but we wouldn't see any money for them. So that's something we'll just, I'm assuming we'll go through in our, what we call a Road Bridge Fund or Street Maintenance Program. I don't know the value of them, or even if they're passed. I hear, no, I heard it, but I couldn't remember it. So that, that's another plus that we'll be seeing. When you did our budget, Cheryl, did you calculate any of that into the budget?
Yeah, I'm looking, it was somewhere around 24,000.
Yeah, I, I, we're just seeing if that's going to be a plus or it's already been...
Because the numbers have come out, you know, in the, in the session.
How, how big a deal is it? International Falls got a sales tax, if we can, obviously, that's a, some council to talk over at maybe sometime. Sales tax, district, or adding a 1% tax or something? Is that, is that a big deal to get, just a lot of paperwork? I know they have to approve it. The state has to approve the Tax Committee.
They, they do, Mayor, and the, it, it can be controversial. There are, there are, because the sales tax is viewed as regressive, there are members of both parties that speak out against adding more sales tax. It has been very popular, though, with communities, especially specific to projects, when trying to pay for a particular project.
Never goes away, I guess.
Right. So the, um, I live in the only community in the state that the sales tax goes into their general fund, the city of Duluth. That is just how it happened years ago. Most other cities are all specific to a particular project. So the Tax Committee does have to approve it. There was talk about putting a moratorium on them last year, which ultimately happened this year because none of the asks passed. There's also been an effort by League of Minnesota Cities, Coalition of Greater Minnesota Cities, to, to allow it, allow city councils to approve it with certain parameters met as another funding mechanism, to just give you the power so you didn't have to go to the legislature. And that hasn't moved forward yet, but I suspect it will be back next year. But it is something, if, if the city considers that because Senator Hostchild serves on that Tax Committee, if he's supportive of it, I think we would have a reasonably decent chance of being successful with it.
Well, it's food for thought, that's all I'm saying. You know, we're always looking at a source income, but yet we've always put, well, that sales tax is a little bit different than property tax. A lot of it is generated from outside interest, or most of it. So, uh, something, food for thought, basically, that's all.
But I would say if it relates to, this me editorializing, if it relates to visitors into a community, if you're talking about hotel rooms or food and beverage, I think if people are coming from a metro area or a place like Duluth, they see those, they're not surprised by those on there.
No. Yeah, the price of room is just, I don't know why there's five digits, oh, and there's always five add-ons or whatever. I just got back from Detroit, I couldn't add up all the add-ons, you know? Just look at the totals, all right?
I have a couple things to add, right? Just from a management standpoint, unfunded mandates such as this health safety and sick time and different paid leave time programs are fairly burdensome for small communities and small businesses, some sure do. And as well as Todd is concerned about, you know, how high they're going to raise the minimum wage, but it seems like they have a cost of living built into it. But the metro can raise whatever they want to. Metro towns are there.
So on minimum wage...
So watching out for those things is closely important to us.
Absolutely. On, on the minimum wage, that conversation has largely kind of dried up at the legislature. And I think that's directly due to the shortage of workforce right now, that people are paying significantly more than minimum wage just to attract employees. So I, my family is in the restaurant business, and people used to talk about a $15 minimum wage. Well, you can't, in Duluth anyway, you can't get anyone through the door for less than $15 an hour. Even high school students who are, it's, it's that competitive. So the push for that has not been as significant as in the years past.
The system's actually taking care of itself.
Right. The wages, yeah, the wages have sort of organically lifted. The health safety and sick time, the, the paid family leave, so that, some of that was adjusted this legislative session because they had under-calculated the amount of the payroll employer contributions. They had to raise it this session.
And that's 2026, right?
2026 to pay for that. And that was criticized by the Republicans and by the chamber and others because it is a, it is the creation of a new program that's being paid for by small businesses, some of the state, and then obviously employees as well. But it is part of the, an agenda at the legislature. The, the DFL and especially folks in the metro areas pushed hard on that as one of these new social safety programs to help workers. And we saw, we saw a lot of that this year, too, in the Labor Committee. Just little things here and there that the legislature did with the, under the umbrella of trying to protect workers and to wage, to lift wages. If you talk to the chambers, they will say it's, of course, at the expense of small businesses and will have a trickle-down effect, not only on the prices that consumers are paying ultimately and perhaps the number of people who are employed.
Can you get into it for the federal question? Why don't they give Election Day a day off? Just give everybody a day off on Election Day, go vote. That's what we want to do. And we hear from everybody. And, you know, I don't know why it has to be so complicated. We've never had an election issue here where we haven't been able to count the votes or any discrepancies or anything. I don't know why this is so complicated everywhere else. Just give everybody a day off, and that's it. You go vote, you can't make it, that's it. But not because you've got to work somewhere or you can't make it because the range. It's like Christmas, okay? You don't have a Christmas, you don't have two Christmases, you got one Christmas, that's it. Miss it, you miss it, no presents. But I mean, that, it's just ridiculous what we see in the federal level. But it'll, it'll boil down to the state level, too, you know, mailing ballots and do you need a driver's license immediately, you know, all this stuff. You know, this, I don't know why it has to be so complicated. Is there talk on that at all? Is that at the state level or is it more of a federal level? But the state usually puts input into the federal conversations.
Those bills are introduced at both the state and federal level every year. They don't ultimately go anywhere, but there are people who talk about it. It's part of different elections.
Maybe people like it the way it is. Any other questions for Jeff? Thank you, Jeff. You've done a good job for us, and we will be getting back to, we do have deadlines and then we have to get some of this stuff in. And we'll discuss amongst ourselves whether we're going to reapply. Of course, we'll reapply with the amount and everything else. So if anybody has any other questions, always. Thank you.
Thank you very much, and I appreciate being, uh, being able to come up and meet with you all because now I'm going to go and patronize some local establishments. So I'm not driving back until tomorrow. And at our restaurant in Duluth, we even sell some of the local, that fare that's bruised here in Rainier.
Thank you, Jeff.
Thank you very much, I appreciate it.
Next order of business, do you recommend approval of minutes of meeting? If we have a chance to read them?
I'll make a recommendation, you approve the company minutes of 5:16.
I'll second that.
Have a recommendation set, all in favor?
Aye.
Both, so Kerry, recommend approving May 2024, the list of claims. Anybody got any issues on any of the claims? Either...
I'll recommend approval. Second.
Got a recommendation, set, all in favor?
Aye.
Both? So Kerry, recommend accepting account balances, it's personal letters for management statements of various funds, 2031, 2024.
I'll make a recommendation.
I'll second.
Have a recommendation, set, all in favor?
Aye.
Uh, Jen, municipal liquor statement? Well, you're coming around, Jen, I see you're up in the double digits.
We're getting it.
Dragging triples, I don't know, we're getting triple.
And we're talking, hanging in there, too, so that's, I'm assuming the inflation is level.
I think it really is. I've noticed, too, now, I don't know if it's just because it's tourism season or what, but sales are going up. I think you guys will be happy with June sales.
Because profits actually almost, almost a percent ahead of last year. So it's got to be, you must have a little balance.
I think we're almost, it was tough, you know? You didn't want to upset patrons, you didn't want to, I don't know, you're just trying to find a happy medium.
What, what's planned for this month? I always ask that.
Um, we have a couple, um, high school reunion gatherings that are going to take place over the weekends. And then we'll move into our barbecue cook-off in July, and then the big shindig for August, so.
Rainier, please, we can feel the weight, but I guess we get them. Any other questions for Jen? Motion, recommendation?
I'll make a recommendation.
I'll second.
Have a recommendation, set, all in favor?
Aye.
Both? So Kerry? Okay, this is it here?
He is not.
He next week?
He, he won't be here next week.
All right. All right, then we're opening up to any questions from the audience? Motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Okay.
Aye.
Both? So Kerry?